Let's start this April 1st meeting of the Marytown Council to order. Let's start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome and thank you everybody for being here. And if everybody can remember to pull their mics back, I know that the TV audience will appreciate that. All right. Okay, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I think you had a couple of presentations.
Way ahead of you. Well, we have an exciting night here in Mount Airy. We have two big presentations. And for the first one...
Where'd it go?
Not this one, there's another one up here. Oh, there it is. That's right, thank you. For this first one, I would like to ask Rihanna, I'd like to ask the folks from the Mount Airy Fire Fund, I'd like to ask Mickey Wagner and everyone to join me at the podium. Kathy Barnup from Calvary Church. So I want to make sure you're here, I want to make sure Mickey, you all are right front and center, and then everybody can filter in around. You've got to stage these photo ops. How you doing?
Good.
Fantastic. Well, what you're seeing here tonight is really what's best about Mount Airy. It's how we interrupt people when they're talking, it's... No, I'm sorry. What you see here tonight is what's best about Mount Airy. You see a group of people, and especially one young lady, that spearheads a charge, and you have the great local businesses that come out, and you have our churches that come out, and they all come out to support the community in disaster. And that disaster was our recent tornado, and Rihanna, you went above and beyond the call of duty, along with Calvary Church and Mount Airy Meat Locker for helping to sponsor you. This is Mickey Wagner with Mount Airy Meat Locker, Kathy Barnup with Calvary Church, and the Fire Phone people are all behind me.
Disaster relief.
Disaster relief, okay, well, we changed her name. I didn't get the memo. All right, so this is a certificate of appreciation from the town of Mount Airy, and it's really shared by all. We, the mayor and town council of Mount Airy hereby issue this certificate of appreciation to Rihanna, Mayor, say it right, for her important contribution of time, effort, and fundraising as part of the tornado recovery volunteer effort for the Mount Airy Disaster Relief Fund. Rihanna initiated the cooperative fundraising with Wagner's Meat Locker and a donation from Calvary United Methodist Church.
From Community Ties.
From Community Ties, that may be affiliated with Calvary United Methodist Church. Your volunteerism in this town is greatly appreciated, and it is what is best about this town, and you are what is best about this town. It's issued this first day of April 2019, congratulations.
Thank you.
If we could, everybody stay for the photo. Hold on, hold on. Do it again.
He likes those action shots.
Thank you all really very much, it's really... Would you like to say a few words? Would anybody like to say a few words? You're good.
If anyone was in this room when we had our very first gathering after the tornado and talked about doing a fundraising effort, Rhiannon was 15 at the time, she's just turned 16, stood up and said, "I would like to do something." And so, I think it's just really impressive that she has generated so much community support. And this is an opportunity to say, there's still a lot of families who are dealing with the aftermath. This organization is still taking applications through the end of April. So, people who have trees down, stuff that's not covered by insurance, and watch for another fundraising effort, it won't be with Mickey, we're not going to ask him again, but we will be doing other fundraising, so thank you for your support.
Well, our next big presentation, I wonder what it would be like to see a student, let's say a town council member, go all the way to maybe become a cabinet secretary of the state, oh, hold on, that has happened already, or become the president. Well, the next honoree that we're bringing up, he's had one of his students go all the way to the Super Bowl. And while I'm sure there's a lot of natural skill in that, and I think his name was Big Rob Haberstein, while there's sure a natural skill, it takes a coach to bring that out. I'd like to ask Heather Hobbs Michael and Councilwoman Patty Washabel to join me. Coach Connor, I'd like to ask you to join me too. I figured you'd like that. I'm going to step aside and let these ladies say a few words. Who would like to go first?
Alex, Heather.
Are you supposed to do this part? Is that what you want me to do? All right. Hi, Coach Connor. I'm good, didn't really tell you this was happening. So when everything was going on about the Super Bowl, and I'm Heather Hobbs Michael, 1919 writing court, I mean, do I always have to say my...
Not for this type of...
Okay, sorry.
Not for this presentation.
I apologize. So when we were going through the Super Bowl and everybody was talking about Big Rob, what was, I'm an educator, and what I kept thinking about was that there's a man behind that story, and there are so many other kids besides Big Rob, that this man is the man behind their story. He touches so many children, and he doesn't ask for anything in return. He is an outstanding educator for Frederick County Public Schools, and he is outstanding person to inspire children to do their very best. That grit and perseverance is what gets our kids through, and you are truly talented, and I appreciate everything that you've done for my kids and thousands and hundreds of other kids that you inspire every single year by what you do.
Thank you so much.
I do, yep, I do want to read the record. So here's the record. So thank you to Chris O'Connor, who got this for me, like, in like five seconds when I asked for it. So we have seven state championships, three as head coach, four as assistant coach, three state finalist showings, all three as a head coach, inducted to the Maryland State Football Hall of Fame in 2010, 16 I-70 trophies, we love those, and you have won 16 of the 21 games played in this stat, current record of a six-year winning streak for the I-70, 10 conference championships, and 10 region championships, and like I said, more importantly, thousands of children that have benefited just from knowing you. Say thank you.
That's quite a lot, gee.
And I am Councilwoman Patty Washabel, and I have known the, who we like to call the Ligonore legend for many years. I got to know Rick, I knew of Rick because if your children are involved in the Ligonore sports, everybody knows that eventually they're going to, you know, be lucky enough if they're going into the football program to be coached by this gentleman. My son actually didn't play football, he played basketball with Coach Connor in his middle school years, but my daughter was a cheerleader, and so I became...
A rower.
And a rower. Yeah, she went to cheer at West Virginia and ended up rowing, that's another story. But she was a member of the cheerleading squad for the Ligonore Lancers, and so we were very blessed and very graced to be a member of the football family. And we got to know Rick very well, of course, before that time, but it was a pleasure to go every Friday night, especially when they were home games, and participate in what I hope, if you haven't been to one of these games, that you go, because it's not just the football players, it's everything else that's part of that wonderful evening. And it's all because we have a coach that makes sure that these kids strive to do their best, and not just on the field, but throughout the community, and he always makes sure that he brings the best out in each of those athletes. And because of that, he has a winning team, and everybody wants to be on a winning team, as we well know. So, one year, when we, my daughter was actually cheering, we went to Health Unlimited where this man is usually, because when he's not working at the school and doing all these community events, he's actually working again at Health Unlimited, working out. And he had been nominated and had gotten Coach of the Year. And so my kids were with us, and, you know, we went over to him, we congratulated him, and typical, typical style of Coach Connor is, oh, they have to give it to somebody. And we got in the car, and my kids never forgot that. They never forgot how humble he was, that here was a man who had, and as you heard, all the wonderful things that he did, and he always is... No, I didn't do it, it was everybody else, but we know better. So, I would like to thank Rick, because the one thing that we hope our kids get after being with great leaders is that someday when they achieve and they aspire to where he is, that they will always be humble and kind.
Thank you, gentlemen.
So, on behalf of the town, I would like to present to him this very beautiful pin from Mount Airy, Maryland. Mayor, you wear it with pride, because we are proud of you.
Thank you so much.
Do you want me to put it on you?
You can, you can, right there. Sure, that way we know you'll wear it. Very expensive pen.
Yeah, this is 14 karat gold.
That's real, that's real thin. Beautiful. We have one more presentation, Coach. You all please stay up here, we have one more presentation.
And I know you've won a lot of state awards and accolades, and very well deserved, and I hope that this proclamation of outstanding citizen finds a special place on your wall. So I'll read it. The town of Mount Airy Outstanding Citizen Proclamation honoring Ligonore football coach, Richard Connor. Whereas, the town of Mount Airy hereby recognizes Coach Richard Connor and the amazing leadership and guidance that he has given to the children of Mount Airy. And whereas, Coach Connor lives within the Mount Airy town limits and has always extended his influence in coaching beyond what is expected within his job description. Coach Connor has made an impact and a difference for hundreds of children. And whereas, his combined accomplishment at both Urbana and Ligonore High School consists of seven state championships, three state final showings, induction into the Maryland Football Hall of Fame in 2010, 16 I-70 trophies, a current record of six-year winning streak, 10 conference championships, and 10 regional championships. She should be about 90 years old, that's fantastic. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and town council of the town of Mount Airy that Coach Richard Connor is hereby recognized for his unwavering commitment and dedication to the youth of our community, and is hereby presented this Outstanding Citizen proclamation.
Can you get the proclamation? Yep. Now, I'm going to set this down and ask you to say a few words.
Thank you. First, first and foremost, thank you Heather and Patty and Mayor Rockenberg. Obviously, this is a surprise, and just, I'm very humbled and very rewarding in everything you said that we've done at Ligonore High School. Don't think for a second that I think this happened overnight or happened with one person doing a lot of work. I worked with so many amazing assistant coaches who taught our guys well, taught our guys how to play hard and play smart, they taught our guys how to be good students and wonderful people in the hallways. So many amazing players who exceeded expectations, committed and believed in what we were trying to accomplish, and sacrificed their own personal gain for our team gain. It's unbelievable, the community we live in. I've lived here since 1987, this is my home. You know, my wife and I, as we get older, we're thinking about retiring and moving on, but we won't leave Mount Airy, because it's just our friends, we've developed over here and in this community, in this town, it's, I can't imagine living anywhere else but here. For me, it's the best little town in the world, and our school and our community speaks, is, exemplifies that. Thank you to my good friends who showed up tonight too as well, great to see you. I do want to say, this happened 233 years ago when that girl gave up the country club and going to theaters to go to Friday night football games in the gym. So, Liz, couldn't have done it without you. Thank you so much.
So easy now.
All right, up next on the agenda, I believe the Arts Alliance wanted to introduce itself to the council. Welcome, come on up. It's good to have you here. It's good to see an active Arts Alliance.
We're trying. Good evening. My name is Alex Goodling, and I'm here, I'm the vice chair of the board of directors with Katie Giganti, who's the chairman of the board, and just wanted to introduce ourselves this evening and let you know where we've been at. Just as a note first, I'm a music educator, as well as the department head of the fine arts at my school, I think in Givensburg, so the arts have a very near and dear place in my heart. But over the past year, the Arts Alliance has been resurrected, and we are a group that's worked on building our board, as well as establishing a network of artists, performers, and volunteers. In addition, we have become more active in planning and executing events in the past couple of years, including our community choir, which I actually direct, and we've been over at Wildwood Park doing things for them, and as well as going to Wildwood, pardon me, the...
Watkins?
Nope, Lorian. We've been at Lorian and performed for them as well a couple of times. We also participated in the Festival of the Creatives last year, which Katie's going to talk a little bit about that coming up. And that's one of the things we're really excited about, everything that we have going on this year and the near future. In addition to that, we've recently just launched a membership drive, which is open to anyone and everyone, which is $25 a person, as well as $15 for students. And info on that can be found on our website, mountairyarts.org. So I'm going to let Katie talk about our upcoming events.
Hi, everybody, my name is Katie Giganti. I am chair of the board, I have lived in Mount Airy for about 10 years now. I'm a corporate art consultant during the day, so I help corporate law firms and associations find artwork for their spaces, mostly in DC. And I'm also a practicing fine artist. I actually live right up on Hood Street, so I'm very passionate specifically about the downtown area, and I really think that the arts can help make it a more vibrant community. I just want to tell you about a couple of the upcoming events that we have, that we're super excited about. We're launching the first Art Hunt. So we actually currently have over 25 paintings that will be hidden throughout the town, April 18th, 19th, and 20th, and it's finders keepers. So follow the event on Facebook, we'll be posting clues about their location, and we're very thankful for all the artists who have donated their time to paint these paintings for the project. We do have monthly events such as Open Mic at Superfoods, we have a book and a movie club, and a sketch crawl, where we invite artists to come sketch different places. Last one we had, there were some really beautiful drawings of the caboose, Larry, I hope you saw those. So this one coming up will be starting at the museum, and I know a lot of people are excited because they've never been in there, so it's an opportunity to get new faces in there. And last but not least, we are gearing up for Mount Airy Arts Fest, which will be on Saturday, June 22nd, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. This year, we're having it in Watkins Park. We have currently over 50 art vendors registered, we'll have a little luau zone for children, the Mount Airy Library will be there with their bookmobile and a photo booth, we have a stage with four different bands performing, and we're most excited, we just received a grant from the Maryland State Arts Council for a temporary public art piece that we'll be building, and the public will paint during the festival, and then our hope is that we can move it over to Main Street and have a lighting ceremony in the evening, and have some live music during that, and kind of get some activity moving downtown. So that's kind of what we have on the board now, where we hope that we'll see you guys at some of these upcoming things. We're very excited. And I'll toss it back to Alex here to go over some other things.
So things we're working towards in the near future, we feel that, as Katie said, the arts really can make our town a better place for both residents and visitors alike. The arts establish really a sense of community and culture, and can make our town stand out from other towns. A few of these objectives we're working on is a mural to celebrate Mount Airy's 125th anniversary. We're exploring options for placement, as well as theme, we want to wrap in the history and culture of the town over the past 125 years. We're also seeking to apply to become a Maryland Arts and Entertainment District, which has several benefits, not only to us, but as well to the town, which can include as well economic and community development. So we hope that those can help the town just in general in the years to come. And lastly, one of the things we are most excited about is the outdoor performance space, shown in the downtown master plan that was just recently released. And we'll be applying for a national endowment for the arts, or the NEA, Our Town Grant and other grants, opportunities which we are currently researching more of.
So just to recap, we really want to work with you guys to help with the downtown master plan. We were super excited about the outdoor performance space, we did also see there was a mural suggested in the plan. We want to help walk you guys through what would be best for performers, and also assist in getting grants. I have a little bit of grant writing experience, so we'd love to help facilitate that and kind of get some of these things moving forward. Within the packets that I handed out to you guys, you will see that there's a report by the National Governors Association, we're not going to go over all of it in detail here tonight, it's rather lengthy, but I went through and picked out some key information that I thought might be relevant and useful to you in thinking about the arts and how they might be incorporated into the town. So I encourage you to read through that, you can view the full report there online, there's a web link within that. On the very last page, you will see a sheet about the Hagerstown Cultural Trail, which is again, just to kind of show you what other towns are doing in terms of art to help generate economic activity, get people out into their community, and have them feel like their culture's really being represented throughout their town. And I think that is all we have to say tonight. Oh, this is Molly, by the way, Molly Keener, our events chair, she has just done a fantastic job of getting some of these events going and organizing, doing the social media posts for them, so we're super happy to have her as part of our group. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That Art Hunt sounds really interesting. All right, I don't believe we have any speakers, and I don't see any politicians from either county here. So, okay. Approval of the council, council minutes, I don't think we have the February ones yet, at least unless they came out this afternoon, I didn't see them roll out. So what we're approving is the March 19 open and closed minutes. Bob?
I'll have them march.
Move, we accept the 19 open and close? Jason, is that a second to that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I think we've covered all that we've gotten. Okay, that's, I was talking with Debbie today, trying to make sure that everything had gotten out, and finding out what hadn't gotten out and what had, so, because sometimes I read them, like, three weeks ago, they come out like a week after the meeting, and I'm like, I didn't have any changes then, I kind of forgot. Chief, you're up.
Good evening, Chief Reed's with the Mount Airy Police Department Monthly Report. During the month of March, we attended three trainings. One of those trainings was the Instant Command System training for both ICS 300 and 400. We had Officer Ginevra and Lieutenant Snyder attend TASER Instructor School, which allows us to train our departmental personnel in-house, instead of sending them out to other departments to train them and do in-service training and so forth. And we also attended the newer chiefs and sheriffs executive officer training. As far as community outreach, Community Services Officer Betts attended and spoke at an HOA meeting for the Starling Glen neighborhood, and updated them on the progress of the police department, also with community policing initiatives and so forth. He's assigned to our Community Services Unit, is responsible for code enforcement, as well as community outreach. He's available to also speak at other engagements for other HOAs and so forth, if they would like us to come out and provide them with the information. He's also a certified crime prevention specialist, so he can also go out to commercial businesses and residents and do crime prevention surveys. So if anyone would like our Community Services Officer to come and speak at an event or do a survey for them, please feel free to call the department, and we can put you in touch with him. Again, he's in our Community Services Unit. I began working with the freeway incident traffic management team regarding plans for incident detours for I-70 that could impact the traffic flow in town, in the town of Mount Airy, when they have a large-scale incident on the freeway and they shut the interstate down. All that information's been forwarded to the Streets and Roads Commission for review and comments, so we'll wait to hear back from you, and I can get in touch with them and let them know what's going on, and what your opinions are, so. Upcoming community events with the police department, June 1st, we have the Back the Blue 5K to be held at the Watkins Park, and this benefits the Mount Airy Police Department Community Services Fund. That is a 501(c)(3) organization that supports the MAPD community engagement programs, such as the Shop with the Hometown Hero and the National Night Out. Again, that's also a tax deductible deduction as well for people who want to donate to the fund, and we use that to put back into the community and do some nice community events with everyone in town. August 6th is the, we will be hosting the Second Annual Mount Airy National Night Out. Again, this event is still ways off, and it's still in the planning stage, and other details are forthcoming. Significant incidents throughout town this month, we handled nine Part 1 offenses, which included two assaults, one commercial burglary, five thefts, and one vehicle theft. We handled eight Part 2 offenses, which concluded three CDS violations, two destructions of property, two fraud investigations, and one harassment. As far as overdoses in town this month, we did have one opioid, heroin-related overdose in the 1,000 block of Twin Arch Road, Narcan was administered by MAPD personnel. As far as our performance report for the month, we handled 854 calls for service. Traffic enforcement, we conducted 203 traffic stops, we issued 78 citations and 164 warnings, and 28 equipment repair orders, we made one DUI arrest and one traffic arrest. In the criminal enforcement area, we made eight criminal arrests, issued two civil citations, and took 62 investigative reports. And that will be the chief's report.
Thanks, Chief. I've really, you know, I've liked the posts on Facebook, I think that's a great idea, like, there were the guys riding the dirt, unlicensed dirt bikes up and down Main Street posting their pictures, that's gonna, somebody's going to know who these are.
Right, that's what we figure, someone knows who this is.
That's a great idea.
And you see a lot of the comments to, some people don't realize the seriousness of that, that, you know, doing that, first of all, the vehicles are not street legal, they're not supposed to be operated on the highways, it's a violation to operate them in town. And not to mention, when they're cutting in and out of traffic and passing cars in the streets, they're creating a hazardous situation, and when they run from the police, that's another issue. You know, that's something that could have been very well taken care of, if they would have stopped, the officer would probably have gone, hey, look, you can't have your vehicles on the street, let's take them off, we'll get your parents to come pick them up, and that would have been the end of the story. So they exacerbated things, and they decided to run from the police officers and created a more hazardous situation, so...
Was that a couple of days ago?
That was this weekend, yes, yesterday.
I heard, I heard, I heard HDB's on the side.
Right.
It was Sunday.
Sunday, yes.
Yeah, I heard it.
It was that, I'm riding Ridge Road, and it was all day long.
Incidents have gone down, they were getting bad for a while?
For a while, it was really bad.
Getting bad, and I guess with the warmer weather coming, we can expect an uptick.
Right, right. It seems an uptick will swing as the weather gets better and the days get nicer.
But now that people know that they'll be on social media, maybe they won't be as inclined.
Oh, we're hoping that, you know, somewhere, somewhere, someone knows who these kids are, and we can get the calls and go out and take some preventive action, and try to keep it from happening again, so.
Well done, Chief.
Thank you.
Hey, I'm curious about the dumping violation, and Barney may have a better answer, but it implies here that we removed 2,000 gallons of grease and sewage from the town sewer system. Is that specifically from that truck, or is that something that was done over time?
If I'm correct in stating this, there's the pump house, wherever they're pumping this, I think the Department of Public Works was down there, and they saw that this particular pump was working extremely hard, so they knew something was up.
Yeah.
So that led them to kind of start looking around in the area, because they knew something was flooding that system. And they actually encountered the vehicle in the parking lot at the Pizza Hut, where it was, it had a tube running right into the manhole cupboard, right into the ground, and going right into the sewer system, right to that pump. So that's where we got involved, and of course, they had to have another vendor, I guess, come out and remove it, and pump it, pump it out. So, yeah, so from what I'm gathering, that was about 2,000 gallons of grease and other substances that were mixed in with that, that they were pumping into the town sewer system, so.
Okay. So is that just a citation? How do we handle that in terms of penalty?
Well, there's a couple of different ways, there are criminal charges, and we did file criminal charges against them, so, and then there's also a town ordinance violation, so we filed the state charges against them.
Okay, all right.
Is there a fine?
I can, I'd have to get back to you on what the exact fine is, but yeah, there's a penalty to pay for that. to pay for that, yes, so...
I think it's $500.
That would... I think that's the town ordinance, if I'm correct. It's the town ordinance, but they were also charged on the state.
The town fine's not large enough, just...
Right.
I know. I was gonna say, if we had to pay a company to come in to extract everything out, right?
And more or less likely, what we can do is ask for restitution when it goes to court, and the court can order restitution to pay the town.
Can you coordinate with Tom McCarron on that, please?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think it's good that, you know, it's in the report, and I think you posted that on social media, too, because I think a lot of people would just drive past that and say, they must know what they're doing.
Correct.
You know, so if you see somebody with a hose sticking in a drain in town, call somebody.
Especially when it's going into the street down in the manhole cover.
Or if you see anybody taking water out of a fire hydrant.
Mr. Swanson will give us another fog lecture.
Yeah, or our fire hydrants.
That's a penalty to us.
We don't give people access to pull water of our hydrants either, and that's a real problem we have. People come in from out of town, hook up to our hydrants, and get tanks full of free water. So if you see anybody hooked up to a hydrant other than a town guy or the fireman, they shouldn't be.
We're coming up in that season of the year when construction's starting up, and you start to have that type of activity, too.
They come into town, and they need to go out and water the grass at some development that doesn't have water yet, and basically, they come into town and steal water.
Great job, Chief.
Thank you. Great. Thank you.
Fire Company. Bruce?
For the month of March, rescue calls, 82 in Carroll, 51 in Frederick, two in Howard, one in Montgomery, for a total of 136. Fire calls, we had 15 in Carroll, eight in Frederick, three in Howard, for a total of 26, resulting in 97 calls for service in Carroll, 59 in Frederick, five in Howard, one in Montgomery, for a total of 162 calls during the month of March. And our breakfast with the Easter Bunny will be on the 14th, because the normal third Sunday is Easter Sunday, so we'll be having it on Palm Sunday. And I know the Lions Club will be having their Easter egg hunt after that, so come and get breakfast and get all fortified to go out and hunt for Easter eggs.
Thanks, Bruce.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, up next.
I'm here.
Yep. You gonna put on your election hat?
Let me put my election hat on. We have an election coming up in May, first Monday in May. We have candidates for that. The election board will be meeting on Monday to receive the report from the Ethics Commission and make the nominations official at that point and approve the ballot, et cetera. And Debbie, we will have absentee ballots available on...
The 15th?
On the 15th, here at Town Hall. So if you're planning on being out of town or want to feel you may not be able to vote, and voting hours will be from 7:00 in the morning to 8:00 at night at the MAVFC Reception Hall on the 6th of May. And the last day to register is...
The 8th.
The 8th, April 8th. So if you are new to the town and have not registered or have to change your address or whatever, please get that done, so we don't have any problems. We want to make sure everybody gets an opportunity to vote.
If you are registered to vote where you live in town already, you know, like when you went to the MBA, going to Carroll or Frederick side, in the town, registered in the town, then you are already registered to vote in the town election. So if you're registered to vote and you vote normally, you're okay. All right, up next, citizen concerns, citizen comments, community concerns. This is a time we set aside for anyone in town who has something and want to address the Town Council on. Is there anyone out here? Just step up to the microphone and...
You should add compliments onto that as well.
We don't get enough of those, but...
Well, maybe we should encourage it.
Good evening. Frank Dursball, businessman in town.
Frank.
Good evening to all. As Bruce says, it is election season in Mount Airy, and I unfortunately don't live in town, but I would strongly suggest that all the citizens in Mount Airy get out to vote. I think that's the least they could do to support the people in this town that strive to make it a better community for us and devote a lot of time to it. So I just wanted to address that to the mayor, the Town Council, and the future Town Council candidates. I'd like to thank the Town Council members that have chosen not to run for another term, who have devoted many years of volunteer service to the town of Mount Airy and given much to the community with their time and effort. So thank you all for that job. I would also like to applaud the members of the community that have chosen to run for election to the Town Council and willing to devote a precious portion of their very busy lives to enriching the community that we all hold dear. So thank you all for taking the time and effort to get involved. To all who become members of this Town Council and also present members of the Town Council, please take note of what I think you should recognize as what I think could be several important legislative issues I feel will need to be at or near the top of your agenda mandates in the future term. Number one, I think we need to bite the bullet and raise taxes to fund various expensive projects and more than just the master plan that will be coming before you for consideration in the next several years, as I have stated previously. We have put off this tough choice for way too long, and if you continue to believe that we have excess funds at our disposal for an interminable period of time, you're probably living in a dream world that nobody else in personal or business life these days can sustain. Number two, the town commissions, I feel that are composed of volunteer members, needs to have a panel composed of potentially a mayor, council liaison, and a commission representative vote on installation or removal of any member of the commission. The respect and continuity that needs to be afforded these members and their long-term efforts deserves a democratic process if you hope to recruit and retain quality volunteers for the benefit of the mayor, council, and of course, the taxpayers. Number three, as a member, as I am a member of the Carroll County Industrial Development Authority Board of Directors, my efforts to guide the offer of the Harrison-Lashire Annexation will become a focal point in the near term and need your serious consideration as it has many benefits and some issues for you to consider. Please do your homework and recognize the long-term impact of benefits this property will have on Mount Airy. Number four, the downtown master plan, as it has been presented, has merits, but it should not be considered the Bible, but more of a reference guideline. As development is dependent on multiple developers willing to invest in a large, costly, and protracted project, and their investments will be based solely on their returns, which will be based on one major criteria, and that is customer volume and accessibility. Without the forethought of catering to future influx of new businesses with additional potential customers' ease of mobility, we will flounder with business development, particularly on this downtown Main Street area. In the past, our town has not truly been considered a business-friendly community for many reasons, and you will need to be flexible and thoughtful with many of their considerations if you want to come close to seeing this town prosper and be the wow community we sincerely all hope to have in this, in Mount Airy. So with that, just keep those four potential issues in your minds, and they will come to pass, and you'll need to spend some time on that. And thank you, and God bless every one of you to get involved.
Thanks, Frank.
Thank you.
Bill? You look next in line.
All right. I'll be brief. I've got three quick things. Planning Commission at our meeting this past month voted to recommend to you our thoughts on the downtown vision plan overall. But along with that, we had some caveats. We attempted to go through and pick the top five or six initiatives out of the 19 recommendations that we felt might have the most bang for the buck or the quickest bang for the buck for the town. And we added a couple of caveats. One of those was that we think it was very important that we're really shifting... The town needs to shift into an investment mode, and so it's almost like taking a business case approach to see if we're looking at an investment in something that's going to assist and support the development of the town, not only the downtown, but a larger area than that, then what's the return on that investment? How do we measure that? What criteria and metrics do we use? We've, just in the past couple of days, been in contact with both Design Collective and then the market analyst firm, Google and Associates, that they utilize, just really, really bright, bright folks, to ask them, what are other communities you've worked with that have gone down this same path? And how did they make that transition? Is there something that we can learn from them? And they're putting us in contact with those communities and sharing those reports with us, and what we're seeing may be the format for an approach to create a set of metrics where we can take recommendations from something like the downtown vision plan. We can compare that to the overall importance and priority of our overall town master plan. What will help us achieve those priority visions? What aspects of these recommendations from Design Collective help us in that regard? And where can we get the most bang for the buck? So we're going to try to provide you with that due diligence as well. Secondly, yes, Virginia, we're trying our best to have another live candidate forum. Okay? This one's been challenging. We've made a commitment to each other and to the candidates. We're not going to go forward and have one unless all four candidates can be involved and can be available. So we've asked for additional dates from Carroll Media Center. Okay? We put out a doodle with Gina's help that all of the candidates can respond to. We're going to do our best to try to be able to utilize one of the dates that Carroll Media Center can provide. However, if that doesn't work, and there's another date that Carroll's not available, but our candidates are, then we'll go forward with a live candidate forum that won't be televised. We'll just ramp up the promotion to let people know, and we'll try to get a suitably large enough venue where we can pack some folks in. Okay? The important thing is to give the candidates the chance to introduce themselves to you and for you to have the chance to look them over. That's the process we want to make sure we continue to have in Mount Airy. Lastly, Melissa Thorne reached out today to me. We are attempting... She's going to work with the Planning Commission to see if we can't coordinate another commission information exchange mid-year, okay? In a June-July timeframe. That will also be great timing because it will motivate all of the commissions to look to provide an update on where they stand with rollout of their responsibilities in the town master plan. And we're slightly over halfway through the cycle where we need to do the next update, so very appropriate that we have both the commission information exchange and we look to see and report where are we in the implementation of what is in our master plan and we wanted to accomplish, and we laid out in that document. Okay?
Thanks, Bill. All right. Doc?
If you noticed tonight on the way into the council chamber...
Doc, you have to identify yourself.
I'm sorry.
You know that.
O'Brien, 806 Park Avenue.
Why you gotta yell at him like that?
If you noticed on your way in tonight that the final phase of the caboose project is starting to percolate through and the concrete's being torn up and getting ready for footers to add the final part of the project for the caboose, the cover, to protect it. And it's taken a long time to get this far, and thanks to Larry and Mary and all the volunteers and the council and Barney and the maintenance staff, it's gonna happen. It'll be really a nice thing to show off for this town. So thank you guys very much. Thank you, Doc.
Yeah, so I saw the dust and heard all the hammering this morning and went down there and saw them cutting away the concrete, so that was neat. That's... And that's well needed. If you go to cabooses in other towns that are sitting out, they're pretty rotten after a couple of years. They were kind of made by being able to be almost like disposable items, so we need to keep that fixed. So thanks, Larry, and I know Larry put in a lot of time. Doc, thanks for that.
Yeah, Mary put a lot of work into it, so...
All right.
And we had a good day down in Annapolis pitching.
Yes, yeah. All right. Annexation Resolution Number 42, Dorsetown, that is only here for reintroduction, just to make sure we stay on our timeline, so I will reintroduce it. Is there a second? A second from you, Bob?
Second, yes.
Okay.
There are members from that community that are here. Did you have any questions, or you want to wait until next month, or...
We don't know anything.
I mean, we've had some meetings.
We're waiting for things to get back to us, which is why it keeps getting pushed off.
Well, they showed up. Did you want to say any concerns? Because it's the topic. Came all the way down here.
I don't have a lot of concerns, but I'd like to know what's going on first.
We do, too, which is why we're pushing it off, so that they can get us a more firm grip on what's going on. So hopefully, by next month, we'll have a final package.
I think what's important to them is whatever documents we get that are public documents need to be put on the website so they can check them and they can see them prior to the meeting, prior to us making that decision.
And also for us, it's awfully difficult to get this thing at 5:00 and be able to make a decision at 7:30. We need to... It's a difficult piece of legislation, and we need to look it over for at least a couple of days.
Well, we know as a general rule, if we don't have it by the Wednesday before, I will not have it on the doc, on the agenda.
All right. Just saying.
All right. Ordinance 2019-2. This is here for adoption. This is the Town Council Liaisons on Town Commissions.
I will make that.
You gonna move that one, Bob? I will second that. Do we have any discussion on this one?
And I just want to make it clear, this is kind of a... Well, this is something that Larry and I have come up with working together, trying to get a 5-0 vote on liaisons voting. And what it does, liaisons will only vote in two instances. Number one, if it's a tie vote. Number two, to make a quorum. And it does have the residency requirement for the Planning Commission. And is that it, Tom? Is that everything that's in there, pretty much?
Yeah, that's pretty much it.
Is that for all? Pardon me? I interrupted.
It's going all commissions?
All commissions.
Right. And Bob and I talked about this, I don't know, about a month ago. We were having a phone conversation. I said to Bob, I said, you know, it really... Our vote really doesn't matter much, except in a tie situation. I mean, if the vote's going to come 5 to 4 anyways, our extra vote making it 6 to 4 doesn't really make a difference. So I thought this was kind of a reasonable compromise to get this resort resolved.
And I was very interested to make sure that all commissions are doing the same thing, so that we, as we work for years and years, we're on different commissions, and the voting privileges are all the same on all commissions.
Anything else?
Yeah, and Tom may be about to point to it, because it looks like you're flipped to the page that I was going to flip to.
We got a typo. There are two typos. One is in Section 25-2, second line, where it says, "One member of the town shall be a member." It should be, "One member of the commission shall be a member." And then on page 4 of 6, Section 32-1, fourth line down, eliminate one of the who's.
The town who, 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 shall, okay.
Dr. Seuss wrote that.
You gonna amend your motion to make those two changes, Bob?
There's a couple more.
Okay.
That need to happen. So the... And I also don't want to go before we hear Roxanne.
No, I... She's the new chair of planning, so since this is really her commission's thing, she'll definitely get a shot.
And I think we're on the way to a good ordinance here. The first half of the commissions in this ordinance, it's ended with, "The council member will serve for the elected term of office." And then when you get to the later commissions, that terminology has changed to "the balance of his term." And I don't know which one we want to go with, but I... And I'm not sure...
You think it should be consistent, but it doesn't matter which one we go with.
Yeah, but, you know, we either say "the balance of his/her term" or "elected term of office." Just to, I mean, if we're cleaning it up for that purpose, then we should make it the same all the way throughout. You see what I'm saying? And I'm not sure which one's best.
Yeah, I think they both mean the same thing. I think that the terminology did change. And it's, is the product of the fact that these were enacted originally at different times.
Okay, all right.
So some of these are just holdover. I mean, some of them are, the way it was, we're not changing it, it's just the way it was in the past.
So we should just pick one and go with it?
Yeah, I think that'd probably be a good idea. You're right.
All right. Okay, and at the Sewer and Water, which is the last commission that you have in here, you've forgotten, not that you've forgotten, we've forgotten to add in where it says, "Each member, except for the council member who shall serve for his elected term of office," should be in there right after its line four, where it says, "Each member is to serve four years."
Is this section 36-1 or 38?
Thirty-eight dash one.
Yeah, thirty-eight dash one, section.
I'm sorry.
Okay. We changed all the other commissions one way, and then we forgot to do it on this one. And where it says, "Each member is to serve four years," right after each member, it should say, "Except for the council member who shall serve for his elected term of office."
Yeah, each member is to serve four years or until his or her successor in office.
Yeah, that's another case where it was just essentially left the way it had been before.
Right, but we did, I mean, we made that change.
We fixed it elsewhere, yeah.
So right after each member should have a comma, except for-
Yes, each member, comma, "Except for the council member who shall serve for his elected term of office," or "The balance of his term," whichever one we go with.
I would almost stay away from the term, "The balance of his term," because you do something that none of the other mayors did. You will appoint somebody that, normally they have a four-year term, and there's two years left, and for some reason, they aren't on the commission anymore, and you will appoint somebody to finish those two years instead of just throwing another four-year candidate in there.
And I agree with you, Bob, that every two years, we have an election. So, I mean, we have an understanding that we get scrambled every two years, which isn't a bad thing.
I just don't want to take your authority to a point away.
And then my last comment.
What would be in conflict, it wouldn't take away, but yeah.
My last comment is that when we're talking about the Planning Commission, there's a line in there that talks, if you go to page three of six, go down to 25-2C, and you'll see that it says, "All members shall serve with such compensation as the mayor and council deem appropriate." And this is where I'm running into an issue that I think we should discuss. "And may be removed by the mayor and council for inefficiency, neglect of duty, or malfeasance of office."
Now, that's old language. We're not changing it.
I know it's old language, but to that point, you know, now, now we're writing it so that we're all members, okay? And so we're subject to that line. And my question is, should that line be added to all of these commissions right after where it says, the last line in each commission where it says, "Actual expenses incurred to the extent authorized by the budget and may be removed by the mayor and council for inefficiency, neglect of duty, or malfeasance in office?" Should we add that? I'm not convinced that we should because, you know, we do have other areas in the code that address the removal of commission members.
I think one of the issues is, Planning is the commission that has real authority.
Yes.
Whereas the other commissions are advisory.
Okay.
So there was somewhat of a difference there between the two. One's, you know, Planning has its own independent authority, independent of the council, whereas the other one's all, you know, the council could just say, "We're not listening to you."
Okay, and I'm, I'm okay with that.
So the charter already provides the standard by which a commission member or an appointed official can be removed, and it's for malfeasance, basically this language here, which itself comes from the state code. So if anything, the language here in this section, section 25-2C, is really unnecessary. It's old language. I retained it just because it's been there all along. It itself is duplicative. If you struck it, you would still-
And I would agree. And I do believe, I mean, the intent of this ordinance is to make us members, make us all play by the same rules on each commission, and to that it satisfies. It does open up some questions about, you know, some of the other verbiage on specific commissions, but I think in general, it does what the ordinance is intended to do. The, well, I won't even say that. I'd like to hear what Roxanne has to say.
Can I just say one thing? It's just a little thing.
Sure, Patty.
It does say, who, when it talks about the council member, it says, "Who shall serve for his elected term of office."
That's the way it is in the land use. That's why it's that way.
Should be changed.
Well, it's throughout the whole.
It's all throughout, all the pronouns.
I think Jason pointed that out at the last meeting.
I told them the last time.
And, you know, we could certainly change all he's to he's slash he.
But state law specifically says whenever something says "he," it means he/she. And that's, and I think you're right, Roxanne, that's probably the way the state code reads, and that's why we're repeating state code language.
Okay, I just-
I understand the issue, yeah.
It says he/she.
If I had drafted it, I would have put he slash she, but we're covered, we're, go ahead, come on, Roxanne.
Okay, first off, I appreciate all the work that the town council and the councilmen have worked on this. I think you need to separate the Planning Commission out because the Planning Commission is not formed, developed through the town council. It is according to the Maryland Code, the Land Use Code, Title II. And it's a little more specific than what you want for the other commissions. I'm pulling the code up here because there's, it says that the, you can appoint an ex officio member, and they are the member of the commission concurrent with their term. That's how it states. And I think, I know you have other wording, but I think you need to pull the Planning Commission out and use it separately. The other point is with the voting of the ex officio member, and you say it won't mean anything because it's in a tie. Oh, my goodness. Suppose we're in a subdivision and annexation, and it's tied. That councilman's vote is going to be the decision. I do not agree with that. Also, if the councilman votes on the Planning Commission, should he vote at the town council? That means he's voted for that twice. I do not think the councilman should vote twice on anything pertaining to the Planning Commission. It's a slippery slope. I don't like it, and I don't agree with it. Just my opinion. And we, we're, you know, we're formed by the state, not by you guys. Thank you.
All right, Eric, then Bob.
First of all, I totally agree with you, and I sent that up the flagpole, and it was rejected here. So, you know, this is the compromise that came out of that. I would tell you, the Planning Commission can write their guidelines, and their guidelines can reflect whatever the Planning Commission wants it to say. But I, but we tried to separate out the Planning Commission, and it couldn't get three votes at this table, and that's the reason we're where we are.
So you're saying, in my rules and procedures, I can put in whatever I want?
I'm going to read Article 2, Commissions, the bottom line, and it's, "The town council-"
I think that's what you just-
Well, yes, I did.
Okay.
Okay, but listen. "The town council may by resolution adopt general rules providing guidelines for the operation of the town commissions." So you can write the guidelines, but it's got to come to this table.
No, it does not.
It says it does.
In the Maryland, in the Maryland plan title-
I think you said land use gives them independent-
Yes, it gives us independent right to do our own rules and procedures.
Well, then, we can have that discussion down the road. I mean, I'm not-
Okay.
Bob, you were putting your hand up next?
Yes.
Go ahead, Bob.
When you vote on the Planning Commission for, say, the Dorset Town annexation, you're voting on a very different set of qualifications. You are voting to make sure that this annexation meets the law, okay? To make sure that your adequate public facilities ordinance are all taken into effect, okay?
I understand.
When it comes to this table, you're voting on very factual things. When it comes to this table, we're voting on people, okay? But we are not voting on the same thing. I'm not voting whether the adequate public facilities ordinances are all in place. You already told me the recommendation that they are.
Well, I told, in talking with other jurisdictions, they all have the same opinion about the councilman voting twice. And I'm just, that's just my opinion. And I think it can be construed. And if we have something that comes to the point where it's a, it's a tie, that councilman is going to break the tie and make, and essentially make the decision.
I wrote it exactly as you're saying.
I know, I know.
And it could not, it couldn't get through.
I understand, and that helps me a lot. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
So, two points. Tom can correct me on one, but, and I witnessed it, Bob highlighted it. There are times where the councilman is voting on issues leading up to a final vote, and it's the step process that gets you to that final vote. So they're not always double voting. I think there is instances where they may double vote, but there's more times than not that they're voting on things building up to that. And also, Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, and I know it's in our charter, but if it wasn't in our charter, do we even need to have a Planning Commission? It's not required by the state of Maryland, is it?
No, the land use article says that municipalities may create-
So I'm just saying, we don't, so when we talk about laws, we don't even have to have a Planning Commission legally. So, okay, that's all.
That's interesting. Carl, you're not on planning.
I know, but I might have a compromise or a suggestion that might lessen the impact.
I'm seeing a bunch of no heads here.
Well, I'm not a no head. Carl wants to talk, I'll listen.
Carl, if you, Carl, if you can be real quick.
It will be quick.
Okay.
It seems to be the, I talked, I know, it's what I discussed with you last month after the meeting about the potential compromise of changing the word from may to shall under Planning Commission. The mayor shall appoint an alternate. Right now, it's may in the code. This way, the Planning Commission will always have seven members, or an alternate is allowed to get on to it. The alternate will have the first right to break the tie if the alternate is not serving as a normal, in the capacity of a normal Planning Commission member. Does that make, does that make sense to you? So therefore, the only way the council member would be able to vote on it, if the alternate member is serving, is filling in for a commission member that would not be there if there's a tie. The alternate member would have first tie-breaking authority.
So you're going to have your-
That seems to be getting really convoluted.
So you're going to-
Yeah, here's what you're saying, but I think we're-
Excuse me. Okay, so it seems that your part-time, your part-time Planning Commission member is now going to make the decision for the rest of the Planning Commission.
Can I interrupt?
Roxanne, you're on plan. This is, this is your topic.
Right, Bob. You cannot ask an alternate, who, sometimes alternates don't attend all the meetings. They're not familiar. I would rather not vote as the commission chair. And if there's a tie, the commission chair break the tie.
Okay. Guys, could that be written into your rules? Yeah, you could do that in your own rules.
In the Board of Appeals, it used to be like that. The commission, the chairman of the Board of Appeals did not vote unless there was a tie.
You could do that in your own rules. Yeah, good point from Jason.
And when I was the chair of works, I voted to either make a tie or break it.
Right.
That's the only, the only two times I would-
I would rather do that.
All right, we've got a specific ordinance in front of us, so we need to deal with what we've got sitting here. Larry's made a few text changes that I don't think anybody has any issues with.
Right.
Did you get them all, Tom?
Yeah.
Most importantly, so you can pass them on to Debbie.
My intent would be for me to go through them, make sure I've gotten them all, and then maybe the movement can amend his motion to accept, to approve with these changes.
So you want to read them back?
Yeah.
Okay.
Should we do that?
That's probably a good idea.
I will make my motion to include Tom's changes, if that's what you need, Tom.
Okay. The first thing is, is that wherever in each of the sections, we talk about the council member serving for his elected term of office, or in later sections in this ordinance where it says "the balance of his term," first of all, we would change the word "his" to "his" or "her." Secondly, that we would adopt consistent language. I'm not sure whether there was a preference of either one, or whether we wanted to go with Roxanne's concurrent with his or her elected term of office. That sounds as good as any concurrent with his or her elected term.
That's acceptable.
Okay. Then, on section 25-2, in the second line where it says, "One member of the town shall be a member," it should say, "One member of the commission shall be a member of the council." In section 32-1, third line down, eliminate the duplicative word who, W-H-O.
It's 32-1.
32-1.
It's 31-1.
Page four, six.
It's 31-1.
Right here on 32-1.
Yeah, you're right. Section 31-1.
Oh, I didn't realize it was there twice. I only had one mark.
I may have blocked and copied these, so we, yeah. So in section 31-1, eliminate one of the W-H-Os, and also in section 32-1, eliminate the same thing. And at the very end, section 38-1, after the words in the fourth line, after the words "each member," we would add new language to the existing language as follows, comma, "except for the council member who shall serve for the, shall serve concurrent with his or her term."
Wow. My question would be if we think we should have, Tom, redo all this and put this on next month's agenda?
I'm okay with waiting. Is, does anyone on a commission have something critical coming up between now and then? Yes. I'm okay with voting now.
Jason, Patty, Bob, everybody okay?
Yeah.
Bob, you're amending your motion to cover-
Amending my motion for these, these changes.
And I will amend my second. No more discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That was unanimous.
Thank you.
That was a long time coming.
Yes. Appreciate the support, guys.
All right, ordinance 2019-3, "Dopta Budget, Set Tax Rate for the Town of Mount Airy." This is here for introduction. It's here for introduction. I will so move.
Oh, you said.
Jason's getting a second, and I think we will probably, we setting dates tonight? I guess when Charlene comes back, maybe?
I have it on the calendar. She gave me the dates they, or on the agenda that she gave me the dates they cannot need.
Okay, these are budget workshop dates.
It's one under new business.
Budget workshop dates.
Oh, it's at budget, I see it, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. 2019-4, allow consideration of local bidders' contracts and suppliers for making purchases. This is for introduction. It doesn't say so, but it is for introduction. I will move it. Do we have a second? Jason's seconding.
The only thing that I would just make sure that all the pronouns are corrected to his and her as well. I was able to justify one, 26-3, section C, where it says each bidder shall accompany his bid. Under oath that he has not been a party, so I would just change the pronouns. That was the only thing I had.
All right, do you want to, I guess, circulate a copy that said like that, Tom? Thanks. All right, well, that's for introduction, so we're done. Next up, resolution 2019-3, ma'am's a low run to allow alcohol in the rail yard. I will so move, I'll let Larry move that, and I will second that. Any discussion on this one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That was unanimous. Moving on to new business. Roxanne?
Does this ordinance become effective? I need to know how I have to approach the next planning and zoning meeting.
You mean, is it effective immediately?
Yeah, is it effective immediately?
Twenty days, I want to leave.
Twenty days.
Twenty days.
Yeah, twenty days.
Twenty days?
From the date the mayor signs it.
From the date the mayor signs it.
Calendar days?
Wait ten days, then it'll be.
Calendar days.
Twenty days from tonight, so our.
That's calendar days.
Twenty first, yeah.
Okay, so our next meeting's the 29th, so this will be in effect. Thank you.
For a couple of dinners, the mayor will hold off on signing the ordinance for a few days. Yeah, that is, Roxanne, that is a great question.
A lot of houses going to be ate before we get to here.
All right, recommendation to the council for stormwater pond mowing. Barney, this is yours.
Okay, actually, the next three items are.
Oh, yes.
Just maintenance contracts that were bidding, trying to get everything on the same schedule and stuff, makes it easier for us to renew and stuff later. But starting July 1st, first ones for the stormwater pond lawn maintenance. We have 35 ponds that we maintain, and so we, we put this contract, we've done this twice already, and last two times, the contract extended for six years total. So it was a three-year contract, renewable up to six years, so we're putting it out the same way. And so we got a good number of bids, looks like five of them, and our best bid was from Carries Outdoors in the amount of $49,000.
What was the bid on the last one? Yeah, it's okay, it was in this ballpark, though, wasn't it?
It was in the ballpark, but then we added a couple ponds, which made it creep up, and so with rebidding it, helped bring that price back down.
When you say the last one, Peter, you're talking to one that's in effect now, but we're rolling.
Correct, right, right.
Six years ago, yeah.
Yeah, because I can remember when we first, I guess I was here when we first started bidding these out. All right, I will move we accept the bid of Carries Outdoors at 49,000.
Can I just ask a couple of questions? So how exactly do you solicit the bids? I mean, I see you said something about online, but how do companies know to bid?
So, as we've always done, even before we had our online, we put an ad in the Carroll County Times and the Frederick News Post, and then there's, there's, I don't know, four or five at least, what do you call it, like, construction journals and other companies that, all they do is they pull these ads, and then they distribute it to all their vendors that, that are in the area.
Okay.
They do that service, so, so the word gets out pretty well.
Okay, and do we normally have, like, Carries Outdoors, where are they situated? Are they?
I see their signs all over the place.
They're local, they have an A31 number. They, they currently do all of our, so they do work for us currently. When we have, you know, need a, our code enforcement with mowing grass on a property that, where the grass is too tall, they're the ones that come out.
Okay, and the 49,000 is for the whole three years?
It's, no, no, per year.
Per year, so, okay.
Per year.
And we got five bids, right? So obviously, obviously, the word got out that it's there. But I see Carries, they're the ones with those signs with, like, the high grass and the woman peeking over the top, that's Carries.
Oh, that's good. Now, now I'm going to see it.
Now, when you see those signs, you'll know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, now I'm going to see it.
Yeah, their card, their, their signs are all over the place.
Bob's got a point of order here.
Bob?
Aren't we supposed to make a motion and, and have it seconded before we have discussion on these things?
In theory, yes, but, okay, I made the motion. Do you want a second?
Just point it out, I want it seconded.
Yeah, you want a second, Bob?
Yeah.
Okay, so, now we can have any more discussion.
Sorry.
That's okay, don't worry about it, Patty. I figured somebody's going to second it, so I wouldn't have worried about it. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That was unanimous. Up next.
All right, second one is the cleaning contract. So we've always had maintenance at town hall, and then since we've opened up the train station and the police station, we've started cleaning contracts on those. Now, at the train station, all we do is the lobby with the two bathrooms, and then each of the tenants clean their spaces. So we put that contract, that out the bid, we ended up with two bids, and the lowest bid was Clean Net USA in the amount of $7,287.
I'll move we accept.
Is that a month?
Do I see it?
That's for the year.
For the year. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Bob's seconding.
Is that even a council vote at 7,000, it shouldn't be over 30?
Well, we.
I meant to call in on that.
Yeah, we, we formalize these votes, votes, I mean, of these bids, so.
It's in the budget.
That was the only reason we brought it here.
We don't need to have a council action.
Yeah, you're right, I don't know that we even need to vote on that, but.
But this is, this is for next year, right? This is for starting July 1. Okay, so it's not in the budget. We're, we're way ahead.
It will be in the budget.
Yeah.
All right, just a thought, just a second.
That's a good point, you're right.
Yeah.
I, I, are we familiar with Clean Net?
I can't say I'm familiar with them, but they're, you know.
Well, if they don't perform, we can.
We'll cut them off.
Exactly.
Yeah, when I said Carries, I knew them, I see them cut.
There's, there's a list of a lot of things that they have to cover.
Okay.
If we find that they're not performing.
Then we'll cut them off.
When you do a, say, a Friday night or a Saturday night event using town hall, do we make them aware of that and they come in on Sunday?
We, we do it at times.
That's what we've done, yes.
Yeah, we do it at times.
Yeah, because we are using the, the town hall bathrooms for the, for Saturday and Friday.
We're, we're open quite a bit more than we used to be.
Yeah, we are, we're open a lot.
Four, five years ago, and it is a great thing.
All right, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That was unanimous. All right, next one, Barney, HVAC.
All right, same thing, we probably didn't have to bring you here.
You don't need all these council actions.
Right.
This is administrative executive.
True. So we have maintenance.
Why don't you just give an FYI?
That's fine. Maintenance contract, $6,170, A1, A quality, eating, they had the best bid. And we had one, two, three, four, five, six, six bids? Five bids.
All right, since they're below the threshold, you can, you and the mayor can get together and approve that one without us.
We always, I think, what Patty may have been going for, I hope, and you'll see in ordinance, we do want to pick.
Local people.
We want to go local whenever we can, so, and provide any prices competitive.
Okay, so we're just counting this one as an FYI, right?
Yep, yep. Okay, up next, set budget workshop dates, Debbie. You said we had some.
Push them out, push them out. There are a lot of questions.
With any luck, we'll get it done in one. We've been doing that recently, it used to take, it used to take weeks.
But to get us to one night, I still have a lot of weeding to do.
Well, and hasn't Charlene gone through and, and basically changed everything a little bit?
She's gone through, and then notes went out to just about everybody that did budget submission to ask questions. Waiting for feedback from those questions.
The week, this week's out because Char's on vacation. Also, the 15th is out, and the 19th is out, because we're off. Any other day than that.
You're off the 19th, we're off the 15th and the 19th?
No, the 15th is just, doesn't work.
Okay.
And the 19th, we're off. Good Friday.
Can I throw the 17th out there?
So, yeah.
I, I can't meet any of those.
Oh, okay. Good, push it out.
The only night I couldn't was the 15th, so.
What's following week?
The following.
We have time, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, now, the.
We have to, we have to have it for approval in May, is that, is that true?
Right, but we introduced it, we introduced, yeah, we introduced it tonight, so we need to.
The thing is, I have to get the ad out.
We need to approve it in May.
So there's no date from April 8th to the 12th?
No, Patty.
I will not have my budget ready by.
Oh, you're not going to have it ready then?
And Charlene's out of town.
I'm around on the 25th, 26th.
It's just, the only dates we can't do it is that week of, this week, and just the day of the 15th and the day of the 19th. All other days, staff, meaning Charlene, she, she's the one that has to be here, we can do it, staff-wise.
Tell me something, do we have to set the date at a public meeting? Or can we just make an announcement and let Gina do a doodle, what is it called, doodle?
Doodle.
Can we just do a doodle, since we're all not sitting here wasting the, the time of our constituency, trying to figure out a date? Can, can we do that?
You can certainly doodle.
Let's, let's doodle, and let's doodle and pick a date. It's just a lot easier to do this offline.
Okay, so it would be April 22nd then to?
But it'll be on the doodle. She'll send you a doodle, and if you can't make it.
I mean, does everybody got their calendars? Can we at least try one date? 25th?
I just think it's a waste of time when we have, we have automation that does this for us.
Well, I mean, I, I kind of fly.
He's here that day.
It's got to be when you're here. 25th will work for me, if everybody wants to agree to that.
Yeah.
But if we're going to keep dashing around dates, let's take it offline.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, give it one shot, and if we can't agree, we'll do the doodle.
Okay, that's fair. I'm good with the 25th.
25th, 25th, 25th?
Yeah, I guess 25th's okay for me.
What is the 25th? I say yes because my life is.
It's a Thursday.
It's a Sunday, it's a Sunday.
Oh, 25th is a Thursday.
I can't.
Well, you gonna let, do you want her to doodle?
No, I think everybody's good. Is everybody good?
25th good for everybody?
I'm not going to be here, that doesn't make a difference.
Oh.
I'm going to be in Disney, with my friend.
Does it matter?
We don't, we don't need Debbie for that, really.
I'm trying to think.
Not usual.
It's been a whole year ago. How, do you think we need you here?
I don't think you do.
We go through with Char, and we bring in the different department heads, the different department heads coming here and explaining.
Your only dollars are the election, which is kind of, which is kind of a set number.
I know my money, and I've got all that worked out.
Right, but I mean, that's kind of a set number, it kind of is what it is. There's not a lot of fudging you can do on that.
I need one of the girls to support my.
Yeah, no, I think that's fine if everybody can agree to 25th.
All right, 25th.
Seven?
Seven o'clock, or?
We were doing six o'clock.
We were doing six, and we'd bring our lunch to the table with us. I mean, or dinner to the table with us.
We were here until 10:00 or 10:30, both times.
But we got it done in one night, as opposed to, there were times we'd do two or three nights in the past. So do we want to do six and drive through and sit down with it?
He works 10 jobs.
I drive through Arby's and bring a meal and sit here and eat it?
A public input on, on work sessions is a little bit different, right?
Yes.
They can stand here and observe, but they're not offered the right to take the mic.
I will try to make it work.
Oh, okay, I thought you said.
Okay, so would six, would 6:30 be better? I mean.
That just, a half hour does not help me, so 6:00.
Okay, Debbie's looking at something.
You want to give me your proxy, and I'll vote for you?
Sure.
Then it'll be your fault, too.
You just double voted.
I can't vote at all, actually.
He doesn't get a vote on the budget.
I don't vote. By the fact that he proposed it, and then.
Yeah, true.
Okay, I do have a little problem.
Okay.
I've got to get this in the newspaper. The last date we can get it in.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's the only thing.
We have to advertise.
Yeah, I've got to get it in before that. I'd like to do the 20, yeah, this is going to mess us up a little bit.
The date messes us up from posting?
Debbie, do, 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 figure out what the date is and give it to Gina, and she will only send us possible doodle dates before that.
Well, I don't understand why we can't.
We can't send the 25th.
This is the problem.
She has to advertise a certain period of time.
And my very last date that I can get it in, this is by state, remember, I have to get it in my state in town.
I got you.
Is the 29th, yeah, the 29th of April is the very last date.
But you, why don't you advertise before? I'm not understanding.
I can, but then I have people come and say, I want the budget. I want a copy of it. I've advertised it, I want to see it. If that's okay with you.
Oh, but you're saying that it may not be ready.
It won't be, because if I have to advertise, well.
Well, that's not an advertising issue. Just say it ain't ready, it ain't ready.
We're good with that.
I'm good with that.
I've always had the budget ready.
I'm not putting a draft budget out there.
And I always have people come in, but you're.
Oh, no.
You're calling out.
It's still in staff review. The town council gets it.
And call the mayor. Gotcha.
I mean, Tom?
I mean, if nothing's required, I just always make sure the budget's ready. I mean, if nothing's required, I just always make sure the budget's ready.
Yeah, I'd rather, you know, once it's, and I don't even know at that level if it's-
So, but you asked it to advertise the twenty-ninth, so that means we, we do have to get it all ready on the twenty-fifth?
Yeah, I wanted to get it in to the local newspaper on the twenty-fourth, but that's not going to happen. I usually try to do Becky if I can. But I'm not, I'll just do Carolyn Frederick. Okay, I can do that. I just try to get it in Becky if I can possibly can, but hers goes-
Yeah, I, I may not have it ready until, well, hopefully I should give it to you all a week ahead of time so you can review it, but like a week ahead of time.
Okay, twenty-fifth at six o'clock, Budget Workshop. Everybody put that down. I'm sorry, twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth at six.
At six.
Yeah.
Twenty-fifth at six, Budget Workshop, yeah, yeah, that one, okay.
Twenty-fifth at six.
Okay.
I'll be here when I can.
We got, we got a PWA on twen-, just to make sure, I, I moved the budget, did somebody second it just to make sure we're covered? Patty's waved her hand, so, all right, just in case we forgot that, I wanted to say. All right, public work, we got a PWA here for Twin Arch Business Park, Lot Twelve A. Tom, this is our very standard PWA?
Yes.
I will move, we accept this PWA. I see a second from Jason, any discussion?
Can I ask you a question first, please?
Well, I had to second first.
Well, it's been seconded, Bob, so now you can ask that question.
Um, who is the, who is the, uh, who's rent-making this, alternate properties? Who's the, who, who's the building for?
Mr. Thompson here. It's an electric, uh-
Oh, not electric.
Ultimate Electric.
Okay.
The, the owner of the property is-
Right.
Yeah, Ultimate Electric's in town, that's their-
I just wanted to make sure we're having an issue with one company out there now.
Okay, is that it, Bob?
That sounds fine, yeah.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Genereous. All right, road closure soapbox derby. I move, we close the road, four-twenty-eight from two to seven, Cottonwood Avenue. For the couple mobile races, do I have a second? I see Jason seconding. Uh, this was great because I saw this on the agenda and it said, it said Palmer. And I looked at Debbie and I said, are you like, because, because when Palmer was our, had a police, we got these from Palmer because he had to sign off on it. He was like, no, Palmer's doing it for his grandson now. So, I was like, that's great. I was like, Debbie, you're kind of like in a time warp, but no.
Yeah.
So, that's great, so. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, great. You can tell Palmer that he's getting his road closed again. All right, Mayor and Council reports. Mr. Mayor?
Okay, my formal report will be printed and distributed later and posted online. Just so the council knows, as far as the budget, I will be recommending we stay with the constant rate. What that does, it keeps our tax rate exactly the same. If property values go up, which they have slightly, it is a slight increase in our revenue, but it keeps the rate the same. With that said, I want to announce, and I want to thank the council members. This is the first time we ever did a task force by committee. I'd like to thank the council, council members for recommending people for the Growth Development Task Force for the two thousand, might not be in the two thousand twenty survey, but it's going to be a town survey. Remember, the last one in two thousand six received a forty-five percent response rate, which is huge. It gives, it really gives voice to the community. It really is, because I think yearly coming in five or six percent, people say, well, that's enough of a cross-section of the community to, to say that's what the community wants. But when you hit forty-five, it's clearly what the community wants. And I, I'd like to thank the council for their outreach to the community and their input to form this committee. And thankfully, we have a template to go by from the last survey. So, the members will be, and we're trying to schedule the first meeting, will be Wendy Ripley. Here's an old name, Chris Everidge, Doc O'Brien, Mike Dixon, Matt McDonald, there's another name, is he, McDonough?
McDonough.
Well, Patty recommended it. Steve DeMotor, who had some fabulous ideas, I've already talked to Steve, and Mark Maniona will be on that committee, so we're, we're trying to get that set. And I have a note from the town administrator. We are now advertising for the town administrator position. We are keeping the job advertised local. The closing date for the position is May third, two thousand nineteen. We will be reviewing resumes and setting up interviews for the middle of May and the early of, middle of June. We are targeting the July council meeting to put forth a recommended candidate. The start date for the new administration, the new administrator is the first week in August. Uh, like we did, similar with the selecting the police chief, we're going to put together a panel of people. The panel will consist of myself, the current town administrator, Barney Quinn, Holly McClery, she's our human resources director, John Breeding, community planning administrator, Tom McCarron, and we're going to bring in a gentleman that taught us how to run official meetings. He's a former mayor, attorney, and, uh, town administrator himself, and MML instructor, Jay Guglio. His wife is also the president, or, yeah, principal at Twin Ridge Elementary. So, Jay's offered to sit on our board. We actually wanted a couple planners and we weren't able to get them, aside from Monica. So, I'm very excited that this will be a very good vetting process. Yeah, he's-
Yeah, but he said we, we wanted a couple planners, we only got Monica. It was like, no, we got two.
I, I, and you're right, I meant to say town administrators.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. And that, that concludes my-
All right, I think that's, that's a good group.
And I do have a recommendation for commissions. Uh, I would like to recommend Mr. Frank Dirtsball be appointed. And Frank does green building. And that's what he's kind of moved into, moving a little bit away from his traditional construction and more into insulation, green building. I thought that would be an excellent met with Frank. And I thought that would be an excellent fit for the Mount Airy Sustainable Commission. I apologize that I did not get this information to you in advance, but I think we all know Mr. Dirtsball. And, uh, and if you care to push this off to next month, that's fine, but I'm going to make a recommendation that he be appointed to the Mount Airy Sustainability Commission.
And I will second that. I wish, you don't make a motion.
One of us, Jason, it's your commission, so, do you want to?
I'll make a motion.
You make the motion, Bob will second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
I have a question.
Larry's got a question.
Before we vote.
That's fine.
Frank applied for this position?
I asked him for it.
Okay.
I asked him.
He's willing to serve on it?
Pardon me?
He's wel- willing to serve on it?
I hope so, he just got appointed. He doesn't have to accept.
You, you, you asked him and he said, yes, are two separate issues.
All right.
Uh, there, there seemed to be some interest.
I have one question. Um, Frank is not a town, he's not a town resident.
Is that quantified in the code, in the charter of this sustainability commission?
Uh, you know what? Actually, that's part of what I was going over.
Ah, that may, that may be a concern.
Well, we need, they need, the planning needs to be a town resident now. I don't know about the sustainable, like, actually-
Those commissions are-
That was a comment that I had for sustainable is it's up to nine members and it actually says all-town resident.
If that's so, I'll have to withdraw my nomination.
But I think that, I think that-
Believe so, but I don't think we're up to nine.
Yeah, but I think, you know, I think that's probably a change that needs to occur.
Knocks them out, but yeah.
I think, Tom's checking. Sorry, we didn't do this ahead of time.
Yeah.
I just didn't think about it.
All members of the commission must be residents of the town.
Well, thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, solves that problem, all right. You're drawing the motion, I'll withdraw.
Well, Frank, Frank, we tried, and I, I hope you attend the meetings and take part because you still can.
And you may want to bring forth a proposal to drop that from that commission, because I could see that that's a commission where, for example, somebody like Frank who actually, you know, has stuff here in town could be useful, he doesn't actually live here. He is here.
Yeah, sort of like EDC.
Yeah, right, right.
EDC and beautification.
Sanitation, you can have one that's not.
Right.
So, there, there are commissions we have.
Well, can we, I mean, if that's a change, we can just put it now.
Frank owns property in the town, but he does not reside in the town.
I, I would, yeah, I would come back and run that, yeah.
Well, maybe, maybe we'll look at adjusting that, and we tried, but again, I still encourage, as I encourage all citizens to show up at the meetings and provide input.
Beautification, Parks and Rec, Larry?
All right, Parks Board, uh, at the Parks meeting, there were questions that were raised and further discussion in regard to the inclusive ADA compatible, uh, universal playground that's, uh, uh, that they're looking at putting on in Watkins Park, along with the pavilion and the amphitheater. So, that discussion is still occurring at Parks and Rec. Coordination continues toward the eventual boardwalk section that will be along Rails to Trails back behind the Blossom and Basket Boutique. Uh, the staff met with Cheryl Ladota, who's the recreation, recreational trails director for the State Highway Administration. So, they had a real nice meeting with her, it was early in the month, and, uh, and they talked about, uh, terming the trail as a recreational trail, which, uh, will help us with the funding and satisfying all the requirements of the grant back there. Uh, Caboose Pavilion has indeed started. Uh, I want to remind everybody that fifty, fifty thousand dollars toward that project is coming out of the Community Foundation of Carroll County from previous fundraising and, uh, fundraising and donations, as well as twenty-five thousand from a state bond bill that was put forward by Delegate Avzali for us when she was still in office. Uh, next meeting is April eighteenth at seven PM. Beautification, Eagle Scout Project came in, presented, um, to the Beautification Commission. He wants to go out and clean up East West Nature Trail, add some more stone, fix the bridge with a much better fix than we had about a year ago, and, uh, improve a lot of the drainage issues over there. Dwight Mullenex, who I believe the mayor got a real good picture of him out at Wildwood Park, he's been going out there in, uh, in, or in aviation terms, he's been flying solo out there, uh, working out there on the, uh, on the point of Wildwood, so as you drive past it, and it looks good. Uh, if there's a older gentleman out there, uh, stop and shake his hand and thank him for all that he does. The other commission members had two workdays out at Watkins Park at the entry to Rails to Trails. Uh, they're making a really nice flower bed out there. Gina's been out there helping and I greatly appreciate you being there, so. And then the Girl Scouts had a cleanup day of the entire Watkins Park on Sunday, and then they finished up by walking Rails, Trails and, uh, cleaning up, uh, cleaning up stuff back there as well. And I wanted to say kudos to New York JMP, uh, for supplying free pizza to all the girls that were out there on Sunday. Next meeting is, um, April sixteenth at seven PM. Historical Society, they had their Hall of Fame Dinner on March nineteenth. It was a lot of fun, a lot of people attended, and, um, their cookbook is still for sale, lots of recipes in there, including a Jell-O mold.
Is that you?
My waffle recipe is in there and it is a most excellent waffle recipe.
I just can't get past a Jell-O mold. So, anyway, so stop by the museum, Saturdays, Sundays, noon to four.
All right. Uh, EDC Planning, Bob?
Um, okay, the Planning Commission meeting was on the twenty-fifth. Downtown Vision Plan is referred to the Town Council with implementation, implementation changes to follow. First, we make amendments to the zoning, and these are, these are, there's eighteen categories that are there now. Uh, we wanted these seven put in front.
That's your list of priorities that the planning is recommending?
First, you have to change all the zoning. Okay? The, the second is Center Street improvements at Center and Main Street, opening twenty, or opening Center Street and the signaling at Center Street and Twenty-Seven. Connect the gas line to the bank building. Rail yard, which includes the embankment there, um, up to Center Street. Consolidate and maximize surface parking, Rails to Trails improvements and extensions, both the other way at Twenty-Seven and west, on the west side also. And I, item number seven is a flat iron building. So, that's what's, that's what's coming. Let me, let me finish my report first. Peter Fransho was here a couple of weeks ago honoring Frank Iliano and his, his drug awareness program that Frank is really taking. And that's kind of really nice having Peter, Peter here, and he, he went down to Wagner's Meats also. It is a fun day, Peter and I, Peter and I didn't have a little fun with it. Um, next meeting's on April the twenty-fourth. Um, is that right? Yeah, April the twenty-fourth, a sign ordinance workshop is going to be scheduled for sometime in April. Um, I did tell them that we have budget coming up and that's going to kind of take priority, but they'll probably schedule one anyway. Um, that's all I have for Planning Commission.
Um, yeah, I just-
Roxanne, you got something on planning?
Yeah. We had, I have it different, so I'm just, we had that, there's a possibility to do existing zoning we might have to change. The second item was the gas line. We felt that was important. Center Street and opening Twenty-Seven, um, the rail yard improvements and the embankment, and the other two, and everything else was fine. But I do want to remind, um, I guess the mayor, we'd like these to be implemented as soon as possible. I don't know if any of these things, if you can put a place in the budget for some of those things.
Well, I was just thinking about that because one of the issues that was brought up is a considerable land acquisition. Yeah, we'll take a good, hard look at that.
Yeah, I, and, um, there's a lot of people that are excited about the, the master plan, as I've been going on my turn-
Vision plan.
Vision plan, I'm sorry.
Vision plan.
Excuse me, vision plan, including, um, some developers who are interested in possibly maybe talking to us to do some public-private. Thank you.
But Roxanne, just a dovetail, I didn't want to interrupt during citizen comments, but, uh, this is not a bible.
No, it's not.
That we go by, this is something that's going to be, there's some issues in there that are town-driven, but all, most of the issues are going to be private industry-driven.
Yes.
And it just helps us, guide us to make decisions when we're looking at things-
That's right.
With a vision in mind when we approve. But this is not a bible that says this vision plan is going to be developed. I think Patty addressed that on social media. This doesn't mean all of a sudden we're going to whip out-
No.
-Main Street and do things. And actually, as far as physically, there's few physical changes, uh, recommended in there, in my opinion, relative to the full breadth of Main Street.
Let's move on to Bob and EDC.
Sorry?
Okay, EDC, it's Restaurant Week, folks. The first, which is today, through Sunday, which is the seventh. There are seventeen restaurants in the town of Mount Airy, well, seventeen restaurants in our locality participating in this. Um, check out the town's website and find out what the deals are and where to go.
So, there's going to be coupons and reduced rates?
Look on the website, but normally you just go in there.
What normally, what the restaurants do is they take some of their signature dishes.
Okay.
And, and they, they offer them at a, at a better price.
And some of them are-
They have like a fixed price.
Some are really good deals.
Right.
Okay.
You know, so you get your appetizer and your main and something for thirty dollars.
Okay, yeah, I want to know what Restaurant Week meant, I wasn't sure. I saw the nice, the posters y'all got up.
Yeah, they're, they're-
I think it's a billboard. Didn't we get a billboard up? Wow.
And there's one at the post office as you come across there.
Yeah, it's a billboard.
But check it out, it's, it's a good way to get some good food and the restaurants are needing our help this month.
Yes.
Um, let's see, our meeting was on the twenty-seventh, the natural gas line down to the bank building, Barney's working on this. We sent out letters to all of the property owners from Buffalo Road to Sunset, or to Sun, wrong, what is it, Sunset, Sunset? Okay, so every, that's, that's where we're going to be looking. I think, aren't you meeting with a BGN?
April third, meeting with, and it's, it's an informal meeting, with a friend of mine who is overseeing some of the gas work down there.
You know, just to make sure that we're staying in the loop. We have, uh, probably our next thing is to, is to put together a visit for some of the, uh, some of the businesses down here and that kind of stuff. Try to get them, see if they're interested. The more businesses that get involved in this, the cheaper it becomes for everybody, and we're trying to get it done cost-free. Um, let's see, InVision Mount Airy, it's, that's the vacant bus tour is going to happen on June the eleventh, eight AM to three-thirty PM. We're going to, um, market, EDC will be marketing some of our vacant buildings around town and, and that kind of stuff. It's, it's going to be a very interesting, very interesting day.
Are you going to videotape that? So-
It's a whole day event, though, I don't know how you-
I don't know if you're going to videotape or do some kind of social media promotion so we can have it in the catalog to show other people?
We will come up with something.
May want to be able to give it to Realtors, too.
What date is that again, Bob?
Um, that is June the eleventh. They'll, the meeting will start at eight AM. We got, some of the businesses are sponsoring a breakfast. Um, I think Manza and the Greater Mount Airy Chamber of Commerce are sponsoring lunch. It's, it's just going to be-
If nothing else, it's going to educate a lot of people as to what's available.
That's exactly right. Um, let's see. We're also beginning a discussion on adequate public facilities ordinance where, um, it, commercial and residential and downtown, since there's a residential contingent that, you know, sometimes we're, we're, um, required to, to either put in open space or we're requiring the, the commercial end to put in or to contribute towards open space. Um, so, what we're doing is we're, we're putting something on the back of any of the developers that want to go in mixed use. And so, we're, we're trying to get a discussion started on that, just to see where it'll go.
Uh, I'd like to talk offline about that because one of your members has a potential project and there may be a conflict, so, let's talk about that.
Um, they're, they're figuring that the mixed use, the zoning is, they're going to be hurt a little bit by-
There's an exception for small properties such as, say, if the Chapman Building was built today.
Okay. Well, it wouldn't, it wouldn't apply to anything that's already built.
If it were built today.
Oh, okay, if it were built today. Um, and that's all I have. Next meeting is on April the twenty-ninth, and that's it.
All right. Sanitation Recycling and Mount Airy Sustainable Commission, Jason?
All right, everybody get out all their calendars. We've got some important dates coming up. First Yard Waste of the Year is this Saturday. Bulk Pickup is April thirteenth, two large items per household.
When is that?
April thirteenth.
I didn't pay attention until I heard Bulk Pickup. April thirteenth?
Did you get the yard waste this Saturday?
I don't care about the yard waste.
Okay, thank you for caring.
He just blows it in the room.
I thought in Chris's yard.
He blows it over in Chris's yard.
Uh, then we have National Drug Takeback Day, April twenty-seventh, nine to one, at MAPD on Center Street. Uh, make sure you download Recycle Coach, it's been updated with all of the, uh, update events for the entire year. So, all the dates that I just said are already on there for Frederick and Carol, even the ones that are for Frederick's side that are a little bit different. Make sure you download Recycle Coach. Um, as Bruce mentioned earlier, the election, May sixth, seventh, eight, seven AM to eight PM, please make sure you go out and vote. We have a new, uh, Reduced Plastic Campaign video. I want to thank Gina Cappinelli for helping me work on that. She did all the, she did everything, I just helped kind of guide some, some stuff. And I also want to say thank you to Colleen and Gina again for posting all of the materials. You notice I have my laptop tonight and very little paper, so I'm trying to lead by example. Um, all of the council materials are, are online now. My next meeting is coming up, uh, which is the Sustainable Mount Airy Commission, April seventeenth at seven PM. That concludes my report.
All right, great. And what time does the stuff have to be out by on the thirteenth?
Six AM.
Six AM?
Good point.
Bulk Pickup, yeah. It's real early, so really got to put it out Friday night.
Some people already have it out. So just so you know, there is an ordinance that, you know, prevents that. I'm going to let it slide this time.
Sometimes people come around and and cheer picket, and if they do, then you can go down in your basement and get something else.
Get something else. That is the ultimate of recycling, though. I mean, that's the ultimate recycling. Someone else wants it.
We had a huge gas grill go out one time and took the top off and left us sitting on the deck. It was too big to take down the stairs, so they took it through the house, dropped it off front, went to get the top, came back, grill was gone.
Streets and Roads, Patty?
Okay, we had a very lively meeting on March fifth, and some of the main things that we talked about is there were some items that had sort of flowed down from the previous commission, and so we we took a look at all those items, and some of those items was that there was requests for pedestrian crossing on Prospect Road at the intersection of North Main. And so Barney addressed that, and we're going to be painting that, weather permitting, very shortly. So you'll be seeing that look nice and neat when you get up to Prospect and Main Street. There also was a request on South Main Street, as you make the left-hand turn onto North twenty-seven. There's been several accidents there, so a concerned citizen had asked us if there was a way that we could have a left turn signal because it's a little confusing for people that are trying to make that left.
Do you know where the flashing light is?
No, this is, as you're, like, you make a left.
You're coming off of seventy, right?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm thinking, I was thinking, sorry, I was thinking North Main. I got you, okay.
Right there.
Patty, just so we know, can you explain it? Because I'm not a hundred percent. I'm visualizing you're heading towards McDonald's from Main Street, hooking the left.
Yes, that's what it is. It's not coming off seventy. It's actually, if you're on South Main, you go up to the light, you make a left-hand turn on North twenty-seven, and you have people coming across from the highway, and they're going pretty fast, you know, because a lot of, they're not stopping at the light.
So you've made that turn, because part of the problem at that one turn for the South Main Street extension is, especially during events, people shoot down that road and they hit the dead end, and they turn around, and residents are pretty upset.
Right, no, you're already past. You're at the Pizza Hut.
Right, and you're sitting there trying to go left.
You're trying to go left. So they wanted to know if there was any way we could have a left turn signal.
Barney, is that something you could ask to stay?
Oh, well, no, I haven't finished. I have.
They haven't made a recommendation yet.
So we have contacted the State Highway Administration. They've been contacted many times. We're still waiting for a response, but that is being addressed. Rising Ridge Road, there were crosswalks that had been painted, and on some of the, where the crosswalks are, some of them don't have a stop sign. They're just crosswalks. And so there were signs that were posted on Rising Ridge, but only on one side. So they felt, we really felt that that needed to be addressed, and so we we gave that to our very wonderful town staff who takes care of good things for us. And they said, they they talked to Brian Johnson, and so a suggestion was made to add three posts and six signs to remedy the problem so that people would be very aware, there might not be a stop sign, but there's a crosswalk, so be vigilant about, you know, people maybe crossing. Okay, then we had issues that were brought up, I believe by Carl Munder, that there were some storm drain cover issues on Twin Arch Road and Century Drive, as well as some sidewalk issues. So we had a code enforcement ladder sent to the property owner to have the sidewalks replaced. And we also have, Brian Johnson is going to be rebuilding the three storm inlets near the intersection of Twin Arch and Century Drive. Okay? There were issues. We had concerns from some of the residents about speeding at Sterling Glen. There was a traffic study that was being done. We were given that traffic study, and we're reviewing it now. So at the next meeting, which is scheduled for May seventh, I believe, it will be the Tuesday after the Town Council meeting, we will be addressing that. But just so, if anybody's here from Sterling Glen, there didn't appear to be, I think the speeding, the speed limit is twenty-five miles per hour, and the average was about twenty-nine, so.
That's considered within a range where you really can't do much.
Right, so.
Experience from having been on Streets and Roads for a long time is, everybody in the neighborhood thinks everybody else is speeding. When we actually go out and do studies, we typically find that's not the case. And basically, they say, you know, within five, there's there's really no action that you can take.
Right. So I think that's probably going to fall in that parameter, but we will know better for our next meeting. And our our big issue, of course, is Back Acre Circle. So we have two different issues there. Actually, we have three. One is, of course, the issues that we've had because there's been many people who are going to a business located right on Back Acre, and they have to, they're dropping off their children, and then at times they were making a U-turn in front of people that were trying to get back to their community, which is the Twin Arch community. And so we had many, many issues there from a safety standpoint, as well as people starting to cut through the Twin Arch community, their their actual street. But we run into some issues because the streets aren't town streets, so there's only so much we can do. But the the street that is actually the concern of ours is the Back Acre Circle. And the business owner has been very good about speaking with the people that go to her business. She's had many emails sent out. We've sent email or we've sent a letter to her, letting her know that, you know, there's only going to be so much time if safety is really an issue, that we may not be able to allow any parking at all on Back Acre Circle, but we're we're doing our best to work the situation. Some some things were addressed that we we tried. We thought maybe that would help. It really hasn't, for example, shared parking. There were liability issues, as well as stairs that were going to be put in, so the other business owners weren't really crazy about that idea. We also tried doing a cut-through so that there would be a full circle that people could go around, and they wouldn't have to do U-turns. That wasn't a factor, that wasn't something that we could do due to the elevation of the topography of the land. We did put up, we ended up putting up no U-turns on Back Acre Circle, and there's also going to be a turnaround that the business owner is going to do for us that is on the parking area itself. So that has, it seems as though it's taken some of the safety concerns off the table. So we'll we'll see. We're we're working with everybody and hoping that that will work out. But one thing that came up is, you know, they were very concerned about the speeding on Back Acre Circle because there's a lot of people that go to the Goddard School, and they're dropping off their kids, and of course, you know, people are late, they're trying to get to work, and so they're going pretty, pretty fast, faster, faster speed limits than they probably should. But in order to address it, we're having the Mount Airy Police Department do another traffic study for us, and we'll be looking at that. But we also thought that perhaps one of the things that we should do is put a three-way stop there and put a crosswalk there because we want to make it very, you know, walkable area in town, in the town. And these people really don't have a way to cross over to where the sidewalk is that would take them all the way up to, all the way up to Twin Arch. So they have to cross a Back Acre Circle. So we're in the process of looking at that, and I think that will that will help to minimize the speed, so that will be helpful. Also, on, I'm trying to think the name of the road. You might know better than me. Back Acre? It was Back Acre.
Back Acre intersects with Back Anger.
Yeah, so Back Acre, right now, on the right-hand side, we had no parking signs. And there was a business owner that that felt.
Skyview Gymnastics?
Yes.
Okay, we've removed no parking from one side of the street.
Right, so.
There was no reason to have it on both.
Right, so we had it on both sides of that road, and he asked us if we would take that down, and we agreed that that didn't make sense. So we took down those. Let's see, Hill Street, we're addressing concerns there about speeding and water issues and detours when there's town events. Now you'll see that there's going to be detour signs that will not include Hill Street because it's a very small street. It's not very wide, so we want people going down Rising Ridge to alleviate the problems that they've been experiencing.
Patty, so when we close, we're not going to send them out, I guess it's Hood to Baker to Hill, or when we close, going all the way up. Okay, what we have to do for that, before we can do that for all town events, is we have to have that state certified, because we had to do that for the other ones. The state will have to come in and certify our change, and we will have to have signage for that whole change to carry people all the way through. In other words, we don't, we didn't select our bypasses for when we closed for town events. The state.
Oh, the state selected them?
Well, the state certified those drive, those those workarounds.
Okay.
Very good point. And we used to just close and do it, and then the state came on and said, no, you have to go through a process and.
Now, that's good to know. I didn't know that.
And when we have, yeah, we, it wasn't by random. Those were the only, those were the only routes that we are currently allowed to use.
And to help facilitate that, could I suggest that Brian come up with a sketch of the alternative detour plan so we can submit it for approval if somebody could ask Brian?
Brian will probably know what we can do and what we can't do.
Yeah, because I think it was actually, I don't know if it was the Valentine's Day event, but I think it was in November when we had the pre-holiday preview, they started sort of getting people to use those.
We have.
Those other, you know, whenever they, I'm trying to think.
We currently have two approved routes. One is where we turn at Hood and go around Baker and Hill. And the other one is when you go up, is it Calvary or Sunset?
Sunset.
Sunset to Hill. But Hill is our only current allowed bypass of Main Street from a state perspective.
Okay, well, we're trying, we're trying to get away from that is the the goal.
Problem is, there isn't another good one, unless you go, unless you start the detour of Food Line.
Well, they would, they would start it, yeah, they would start it much further.
All the way after one forty-four, Rising Ridge, Prospect.
Yeah.
Right.
We'll see, we'll see.
Right.
That's it. Our next meeting is May seventh.
So a couple of things, Patty. The crosswalks, they're going to get back to us where they're suggesting.
Yes.
Yeah, they're going to suggest that. We have ordered a speed flashing sign to help them out. They're supposed to suggest that, too.
You want to give us the speed?
It was, and it's solar-powered, green team, just so you know. And we had talked about speed. When we see speed, something that I learned from Jennifer Smith, who's a roads professional, that sometimes it's not just the speed, because on Buffalo Road it wasn't the speed, it's the volume of traffic. And so when you see a volume of traffic, then, even though the speeds are okay, and she suggests very creative things like painting wider lines on the side, so even though you see the speeds are okay, and Jennifer's going to bring this up, I'd so I'd bring it up. It's not saying we can't do any. If there's a large volume, there are stuff that you still look at that volume. That's all I have.
I learned from Palmer Grot, that the people who come and complain about speeding are the ones who he's going to give tickets to the next day when he puts their.
I know.
He's going to go out the next day, and he's going, and he's, all those people who complain are going to get tickets the next day because they're the speeders.
Yeah.
All right, Water and Sewer. Chief, you agree with that one?
I would agree one hundred percent.
Water and Sewer, our next meeting will be Wednesday at seven o'clock in this room. Our big issue right now is rainwater getting into the system. We had a little over seventeen million gallons of rainwater go through our sewage treatment plant that we did not take out of the ground. So that's almost half. So that's, so our sewage treatment plant is running at its edge capacity-wise, and it's not because we're putting it in there. It's leaking in from all this rainwater. Various places, one reason why I'm always pushing for the CSX issue to get fixed, because our system is underwater at that point, needs to be repaired. But that's obviously an issue we're going to be dealing with. Water and Sewer, and our feeling is, and it'll be showing up through budget stuff and everything else, we need to put more into our I and I system, you know, to clean that up so we're not getting as much water meeking into our system, because we're paying for that. And the other problem is, we are, because of all this rain, right at the edge of the capacity of our water treatment system, but we shouldn't be. It's just leakage. So Wednesday night, seven o'clock here. All right, Monica's not here. Tom, Town Attorney?
Over the last month, I worked on, at the mayor's request, ordinance twenty-nineteen dash four, which is introduced tonight. I'm sure the topic of discussion going forward. I reviewed a number of documents relative to Brittany Manor subdivision and by code approved and or revised certain of them. Also, attended a signs workshop, probably the last one, we think, maybe, with the Planning Commission over this past month.
And multiple, multiple phone calls throughout the month, so thank you.
And I will move that we go into a closed meeting to consider acquisition of real property for public purpose matters directly related there, too, subjects being reglet property, CSX property, Rails to Trails, consult with council to obtain legal advice on a legal matter, a subject of that is Prospect Place. And I move that we would be adjourned as soon as that closed meeting is finished. Do I have a second? Bob is seconding. Halt, aye. Hush hour.
Aye.
Washabaugh.
Aye.
Halt, aye. Flurryr, aye. King?
No.
Yeah, well, you have votes anyways.
I'll look at it two more times.
So as soon as we get the room cleared. Mary, those are mostly yours, or maybe all yours.